Welcome to the Central Unified School Board Meeting for February 8th, 2022. I'm calling the meeting to order at 6:05. Attendance, all board members are present. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Correio, second by Mr. Chan. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed nays? The ayes have it. Moving on to item D, comments from the public. Do we have any calls holding?
President Solis, would you like me to set 30 seconds?
Yes, please.
Thirty seconds have passed and we have no comments by phone at this time.
Since we have no calls holding, I'll move into closed session. Thank you very much. Ms. Davis, can someone go back there and tell them?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
It's interesting, I talked to him right before. He said they would not be back there, so...
Music's in their heart, they have to play.
Yeah. Sure. Did she just go back there? Okay, thanks, I just checked and I thought, wait, she's not there. Thank you.
Oh, Castro? I don't know, man. He's, I mean, it is a tough one. That is tough. Was it? Oh, they can hear me back there. That's what it is. Last thing here.
Mike check 1, 2, 3, 3, 2, 1. Can you hear me?
Can you hear anything?
Mike check 1, 2, 3, 3, 2, 1. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10. 10, 9, 8, 7, 6, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1. Mike check, testing. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10.
Testing, testing, 1, 2. Chris, can you hear me? I can hear you, Chris. Can you... Perfect.
Mike check 1, 2, 3, 3, 2, 1.
Testing, testing. Test, test.
I can hear you Kayla, thank you. Kayla, are you able to hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me okay?
Perfect, I can hear you as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll call the meeting back in order. We're reconvening from closed session. Start with item G, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Chan?
Yes, on item E1, there was a motion by trustee Correio, second by trustee Cervantes, passed 7-0, and on E2, there was a motion by trustee Cervantes, second by trustee Brooks, 7-0. That is all.
Thank you. Okay, school activity report, H1. Ms. Baker? All right, not seeing Ms. Baker. We'll move on to H2, Student Recognition.
Thank you President Solis. Under item H2, we have recognition of our cheerleader squad at Central East High School. I want to congratulate them for the outstanding work they did in Dallas, Texas, in bringing home a national championship. To learn more about their endeavors, please welcome to the microphone Athletic Director Ray Hightower.
All right, thank you Mr. Legion. As the girls and our coaches make their way up, thank you for inviting us here. Central High School Varsity Comp Team competed on Saturday, January 24th, at the K. Bailey Hutchinson Convention Center in Dallas, Texas. This was their first year that the Grizzlies competed on the national stage. They competed in the Advanced Coed Division, which traditionally they compete in the novice or intermediate division. And we competed against schools from New York, Pennsylvania, and Oklahoma. We scored a score of 95.5, which is our highest score this season. So we're so proud of the group, and our cheer program is led by our head coach Tina Tompkins, and they were assisted by Stephen St. Nicholas. So congratulations, girls. Thank you so much for all your hard work. Thank our coaches for their hard work, and congratulations on being national champions.
Moving on to item H3, Employee Recognition.
Thank you again President Solis. Unfortunately, this evening, Mrs. Ortega, Isabel Ortega, is unable to join us, but we do want to honor her and recognize her for being recognized as the Special Olympics Unified Champion Schools Fall 2001 Educator for the Season of Sport for the Fall 21 Season. Apologies. Ms. Ortega is a Functional Life Skills Teacher at Central East Campus, and we want to honor and recognize her for this outstanding recognition. Thank you so much, and appreciate all your services.
Thank you. Item H4, Employee Association Highlights. Do we have Kudo on the line?
Yes, we have Judy Martinez. Judy, if you can hear me, please unmute and go ahead and speak to the Board of Trustees when you're ready.
Thank you, and thank you President Solis. Congratulations to Isabel Ortega, and congratulations to our cheer squad. Very well deserved. Good evening Board Trustees and Superintendents. There are lots of activities happening in our schools this month. We have District Peachblossom, Spelling Bee, History Adoption, Wrestling, Track, Flag History, Black History Month, Telltale Shows, Valentine Candygrams, and after nearly two years... Black History Month, Telltale Shows, Valentine Candygrams, and after nearly two years of Zoom Storytimes, the Athletes as Readers and Leaders Program will Zoom on-site visits, starting with Read Across America, with Read Across America Day on March 2nd. Our teachers at our site rep meeting yesterday were very excited to hear that. Lastly, I am happy to report that we've reached a tentative agreement with the district. We are currently working on getting this information out to all of our members and hope to begin the ratification process next week. If you have any questions, Board Trustees, please don't hesitate to call or email me. Thank you for your time. Have a great evening.
Thank you, and you have a good evening, too. Item HB, I've been informed that S-S, strike that, C.S.E.A. has no comment for tonight. Moving on to Superintendent's comments.
Thank you. First and foremost, I want to remind everyone, you've probably seen it on social media, that our Employee of the Year Awards is going to be Thursday evening, 5:00 PM. It will be streamed on Facebook and on YouTube, and it will be a great celebration. We hope you tune in to just really see and be in awe of all of the employees within our district who have been recognized by their peers and been selected for this honor. Secondly, you may have noticed that this week, we are celebrating our counselors. It is National Counseling, School Counseling Week, and so we have an amazing group of counselors who meet with our students for academic and mental health needs. And so this is a week we're going to take opportunity of and recognize and celebrate their hard work. You may have seen over social media that we had our first signing day. I've heard that it won't be our only one this year, but our early signers were celebrated, our athletes, this week. And then, congratulations. And I see our Principal of Pershing out there, Ms. Young. Your academic decathlon team did an outstanding job this weekend. Coach John Barber brought his students in. We'll be talking and bringing them to you at the start of the March meeting to recognize each of them. It's great to see them continuing to participate, and also, it's always fun when we get to hear that in their division, they're in Division III, they outscored a Division I and a Division II team. And so, way to go for our Pershing athletes. I'll also take one small opportunity to recognize, I know they're here for some of the items on the agenda, but thank you to our administrators who are in the room each day that you are waking up early and identifying where you have staff shortages and adjusting and making sure that our students are safe, our students have what they need, and you're making it happen. And we're glad to see, you know, more coming back into the classroom, but you've made it work. And so, thank you for all that you're doing. And that's all for me.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Any communication from any board members? Seeing none. Moving on to J, Comments from the Public.
We have Sandra Bolton, their apparent, and she's going to be patched through momentarily. Board, we're allowing a minute thirty, two minutes? So, our caller Sandra was disconnected. We do have Caitlin Baker on the line. She was our student speaker from one of our earlier items. Did we want to hear from her? Okay. Hi, Caitlin, you're on with the board now. Make sure to turn down your listening device so we can hear you, and go ahead whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I hope you are all doing well. I'm Caitlin Baker, and tonight I am speaking on behalf of Central High School as AFT President. The leadership class, along with some of the staff, have been continuously providing engaging activities to help boost morale and promote school spirit. I just want to highlight our quality joy and voice for class drive that took place in December, where our school brought in a record amount of food items and several large boxes of toys. Leadership is proud of the effort brought together by our students and parents. The month of February is also Black History Month, with our BSCU, which is the Black Children's Union Club, along with leadership are showing videos to inform students on PSF TV American highlights of history of African-Americans. February is our Penny for Patients, a fundraiser for the Lutonia Lymphoma Society, which has also started, which will end on February 25th. Students and adults are encouraged to donate safely through our Penny for Patients boxes and online. Counselor Appreciation Week is this week, and we get the opportunity to celebrate all of the good things our council does for our schools. Also this week, starting yesterday, is a full spring battle week, and the theme of these is Star Wars: Jedi versus Sith. We have multiple dress-up days until Friday, where we will honor our wishes for it with a rally on that afternoon. Coming up on the 21st through the 25th is our FSA Week, which will also include a fifth week for students to join in in part of the state. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Returning to item J, Comments from the Public. Do we have anyone holding?
We may have one other person waiting to hear back. If we could just stand by for a moment, and I'll get your confirmation on that. So we have caller Michael Kurnasoff, teacher and community member, and he's also part of the naming committee. All right, Michael, you are on with the board. You have a minute thirty. Make sure to turn down your listening device so we can hear you. Your time starts now.
Hello. Good evening. I'm just calling in because I just need to talk to the board and let them know that I'm really disappointed and disgusted about, you know, with the committee, the renaming committee. You've got people that are against the renaming committee, renamed, sorry, renaming Polk, that have rung up their own money. Polk is renamed. Okay, so I'm seeing something where the time doesn't match where I'm talking right now. So did my time start already, or?
Yes, it has. Continue.
There's some kind of weird delay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna need to stop. I need my time restarted, because I gotta, I gotta put this on mute.
All right, we'll restart the clock. Please turn down your communication device at your house. You're getting feedback from either your TV or whatever you're watching the board members on. So go ahead, turn that down. We'll restart the clock. Go ahead, your time's just starting now.
Okay. So basically, people against renaming Polk, something they've rung up, there's no money if Polk is renamed, and that class sizes will need to be increased. However, Central's had a reputation, and they've had a reputation for large class sizes for years, commonly thirty-five to forty on any given K-12 class roster. And this is kind of what I've seen when I was subbing, and even when I've talked to other subs, commonly. This has been an ongoing issue with every time Kuda has negotiations for teacher salaries, which teachers, year after year, they do not get the full allotted COLA money, the cost of living allowance. So, one question that brings to me is, where is the remainder of the missing COLA money going? And another thing that bothers me is that I work with teaching math to students, who they come in to me at the alternative edge shut down, and I hear comments such as, "I'm not smart," or "I'm not good at math," commonly. And half the battle on accomplishing a goal is having the confidence that you can accomplish a given goal. Then you have to put in the work. But I have deep concerns and strong concerns that this message you're sending to members, this message that new members of the board administrators are sending to this student, and what you've done to this gate student, where the districts have facilitated having the person who tore down the project and her accompanying friend not only be on the committee, but their chair and co-chair, and correct me if I'm wrong, so they wouldn't answer me when I asked that at the last meeting. Further, the person that tore down the project, they requested that their explanation of tearing down the project not be documented in a minute, which I discussed and they watched happen at the first renaming committee, and what was agreed to by people from Central. I'm just really disgusted with it and disappointed.
Okay, sir, your time has ended. Please, any comments?
I yield the rest of my time.
All right. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Community Member Kancel Jürgen. Hi, Kancel. You're on with the board now. You have a minute thirty to make your comment. Please make sure that your listening device, or whatever device you're listening to the board meeting on, is turned down so that we can hear you loud and clear. Your time starts now.
Okay. I want to know, are you guys going to check in on wearing masks for the kids from K through 12, and how are you going to do that? Is it going to be up to the parents or each school?
Okay, sir, if you want an answer to that question, you're going to have to contact your site administrator. And you have, you have fifty, fifty seconds left. Can you please finish your comments?
I just want to know, because you guys start, you run the schools, so I think you guys should set the criteria for the K through 12. If these schools are going to wear what mask or, or anything else?
Okay, sir, under public comments, the board's only allowed to take in information. We can't answer you at this time. If you want an answer to that question, you can either contact Ms. Davis's office at the Superintendent's office, or you can contact your site administrator.
I'll call Ms. Davis.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, you too. Thank you.
Any other calls holding?
I'm waiting for confirmation. Stand by, and I'll give you an answer. That's it. No more comments at this time.
All right. Do we have anyone that wishes to address the board in the auditorium? No? All right. Finishing with item J, we'll move on to item K, the Consent Agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve. I have a motion by Mr. Cervantes. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Paul. Discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. The item passes. Moving on to L, Action Items. Ms. Lopez, could you please call the first item?
The first item is L1, Hold Public Hearing and Adopt Resolution 21/22-32 Approving Adjustments to the Boundaries of the District's Trustee Areas. Mr. McLean.
Thank you. So tonight, we are going to hold a public hearing prior to considering a resolution to make adjustments to the boundaries of the district's trustee areas. As the board knows, we've been going through a process over the last couple months, receiving public input and holding community meetings online, and informing the board as to that progress. And tonight, we have maps to present. We have our representatives from our consultants, GeoNova Solutions, in the audience tonight, and they will be coming up shortly to walk the board through the maps that we have. The board has a copy of all the maps at their table, and will be answering any questions. But to begin the process, we will start with the public hearing. If we could open the public hearing, and we can receive comments from the public at this time.
Do you want to make the presentation with the maps first? I mean, during the public, the public hearing, so they have, they know what they want to comment on?
We can do it either way.
Okay. Let's open up the public hearing and have the presentation on the maps, and then we'll allow the public to come in and comment on the maps.
Sure.
Good evening, sir. You can start whenever you're ready.
Good evening, trustees, members of the board. GeoNova has been working with Central Unified School District over the past three to four months to create new proposed trustee areas in, as part of that, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you. As part of that process, we've, we've also been taking in public input and processing data submitted from, from the public through various community groups and individuals who decided to take advantage of the technology tools that we've made available to provide public input. As a result, GeoNova has produced four proposed plans, A, B, C, and D, which Assistant Superintendent McLean has made available to the board. We've also received and validated five, five maps created by members of the public, all of which have passed, passed our demographic analysis and are viable for consideration to redraw the trustee area boundaries. If you, if you like, I can go through a brief description of each of the GeoNova plans at this time.
Yes, please.
To start off with, Plan A, can we put?
Just a minute. Let me, let me put the maps up on the screen so that everyone can can view those. Just a minute. Here we go. That's the current map.
Can we move to Plan A? Let's, let's go ahead and start with Plan A.
This is just showing the current map, and we'll go through the four GeoNova plans first, which starts with Plan A. Mr. St.
Perfect. Thank you, thank you, Assistant Superintendent McLean. So, Plan A, Plan A was drawn with an emphasis on Plan A, uh, emphasis, um, was drawn with an emphasis on, um, maximizing the chances, maximizing the influence of protected classes, specifically, um, the significant Latino and Asian communities within Central Unified School District. Um, with, under this plan, we've identified, um, three majority Latino districts, trustee areas five, six, and seven, with an additional area, trustee area four, coming in at forty-nine point four percent. This plan was, this plan along with all the others, B, C, and D, were also created to, um, to clearly identify the, the population centers in the urban core along Highway ninety-nine, along with the ability to create, uh, dedicated trustee areas in the rural communities on the west side of the district. In this case, Plan A, um, uses trustee area one and six to emphasize the, the rural communities in the west side of the district. Can we move along to Plan B?
Sure.
Plan B. Plan B was drawn with, um, with, in an effort to preserve a semblance of the current districts. Again, um, emphasizing that the, the current districts, as they are currently drawn, are not possible due to changes in the census block geography between two thousand and ten and two thousand and twenty. So we have, um, taken the approach of, uh, drawing districts that go, um, west to east. As you'll see there, going from north to south, we'll start off with trustee area three, then, uh, trustee area one and six. You can see those, um, those bands going across from east to west along, um, from north to south. And then, uh, once again, you'll see four trustee areas along, in, in the urban, in the urban core along Highway ninety-nine, roughly along Highway ninety-nine, uh, trustee area two, five, four, and seven. And once again, we have three Latino majority districts, uh, trustee area five, six, and seven. Uh, can we move on to Plan C, please? The, the goal of Plan C was to take one of the, one of the principles of redistricting that we typically consider into account, which is to use, uh, easily recognizable geographically compact shapes and use those to construct the districts. In this case, this plan was drawn using, uh, plenty of ninety-degree angles, wherever possible, to create distinct and, um, and clearly cut district boundary lines. We also, um, as, as with all, as with the other two plans, the two preceding plans, we identified three Latino majority districts, trustee area one, four, and six. However, in this plan, we, um, we were able to create three, um, three districts, trust, um, three Asian, three districts with Asian population over twenty percent, with, uh, trustee area five coming in at the highest at twenty-seven point six percent. Can we move on to Plan D? Plan D, again, you can see the emphasis on, um, on ninety-degree angles and, um, and, and, uh, trustee areas along the, the urban core, Highway ninety-nine. You'll see a little bit, um, smaller geographic area on, on the, on the west side for trustee area one. However, um, that, in this plan, that area does creep in a little bit more towards the urban core, therefore taking a little bit more population, resulting in the, in the somewhat smaller geographic area with trustee area six, resulting in a larger, um, rural area along the west side of the district. We also received five viable plans from, from the public, um, all of which, um, achieved, uh, excellent population balance, um, and, and also, um, you could see, um, just, just based on, on the population and the, and the way, the way the population is distributed among, throughout the district, that the, the plans submitted by the public are, are all great plans. Um, we're, we're actually very pleased with the, with the level of public input, um, throughout the process. And, um, one other thing that I would like to emphasize that I think, um, the members of the board and also the, the members of the community should be quite proud of, out of all the redistricting projects that, that I'm currently working on personally, Central Unified has seen the most public input and the most viable, um, submitted plans from, from community groups, from the public. And this, this includes, um, this includes redistricting projects that we're working on that, um, that have, um, several million people within, when, within those districts. Despite, uh, Central Unified's population being just over eighty thousand, the level of community input has been, uh, quite remarkable. And, um, I would like to commend the, the board and the community on, on that, on that level of, uh, participation throughout the process.
Thank you. Do you have further comment?
Yes, uh, so, um, yeah, I'd like to hand it off briefly to our lead demographer, Jesus Garcia, to discuss a little bit about the citizen voting aid population statistics regarding the proposed district plans.
Members of the board, my name is, uh, Jesus Garcia, and thank you for the opportunity to come and, uh, and present here. So a key fun, uh, function of the redistricting process is to identify whether or not districts can be made that create what are called VRA districts or Voting Rights Act districts. And so we've, uh, made a, a great attempt at trying to identify districts that would be representative of our, um, of our, of our community. Uh, and in this case, uh, the primary goal is to look at districts that represent the, um, Latino community, the African-American community, and the Asian, uh, community, of which is, uh, Bujavi is, is, uh, the largest group in town. Uh, at this point, I can say that through all the plans, except for Plan D, which we're looking at here, uh, it was not possible to create a viable, what you would call Voting Rights Act districts. And we tried, and, and, and that includes the public members as well. So it's, it's not as if, uh, you know, we weren't, we weren't giving it the effort. So, uh, just to let you know, under the current plans, you do have a VRA districts, which means fifty percent or more population of our protected class, in this case Latino. You all, oh, and fifty percent more of our protected class, um, under C-VAP. However, because the variance is so great under the current plans, under the new plans, that were not possible. I'm just gonna go real quickly through all of them. Um, and districts in Plan, in our Plan One, we created two districts for Latino origin that are at forty-six point one percent, and there's one district at forty-nine point four. So we almost got there, but the trias, I might, I move a block and five hundred people would, would shift. We have also one, two, three, four, four districts that are nine percent to fifteen percent African-American. So four of the seven districts on the Plan A have a significant African-American Voting Rights Act population. And then in addition, uh, on of our Asian community, uh, six of the seven have populations that are sixteen percent to about seventeen percent, fifteen to sixteen percent. So again, a very, uh, well-representation across the board of, of our, of our, of the makeup of our community here in Fresno. Um, under Plan B, similar scenario, two Latino majority, or Latino near-majority, forty-nine and forty-seven percent. One, two, three, five African-American districts at, at about nine percent to about twelve percent. One, two, three, four, five, uh, Asian districts that are fifteen, sixteen to about twenty percent. District six in our B proposal is a twenty percent, uh, Asian origin population. In District C, we have six Latino districts that are about, each about forty-six percent Latino C-VAP. We have four African-American districts, uh, including District Two, which is at thirteen point six percent African-American. And then in, in, uh, among our Asian community, we have one district, uh, twen, number five, which is at twenty-two point five percent. Finally, we propose a District D. It was a little more creative. We're gonna, we wanna put it back, but the, the geography is a little more creative and the variance is a little larger. I was able to create one district at fifty-one point nine percent Latino origin. However, for some reason or another, the population fell short of fifty percent. So there goes, there goes that attempt. Along that line, we also have one, two, five, uh, one, two, six districts that are, again, African-American of nine percent or more. And, um, seven districts, one, two, six districts that are at, uh, sixteen percent or more of Asian population. So, um, as Alex mentioned, we also reviewed the public plans. All of the public plans have more or less the same scenarios of, uh, three to four Latino majority districts, and the numbers surprisingly are very, very close all across the board. So in, in our opinion, um, while, you know, we're happy if you pick, uh, one of, one of our plans, A, B, C, or D, um, any or all the plans that have been submitted by the public, I think would be, um, are, are planning for the future and are representative of the great diversity here of Central Unified School District. So if you have any questions, Alex and I would be here available to answer them.
Board, I'd like to take public comments first and then I'll give you a chance for your comments. Uh, do we have any calls holding at this time?
Yes, we do. I will, give me a moment here. I wanna make sure we have the right caller or the correct caller that's the first one to come in. Hello there, you're on with the board. Can you please state your first, last name? And if you're a community member, parent, your title. You will have a minute thirty to address the board. Make sure that whatever device you're using to listen to the board meeting on, turn that down so there's not any feedback. Again, you have a minute thirty and your time starts now.
Hello, this is Central Unified School. My name is Sandra Bolton, and I am a parent of a child at the Rosewood Elementary. I wanted to comment on Map One Oh Four and Central Together, but paying attention to the new growth areas in our community. Whereas if there are lockhouses that are coming up, we know Central will continue to build another elementary school here and we need it. Uh, we absolutely appreciate Map One Oh Four for keeping communities together, but also paying attention to the changing region we live in. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in. Next?
Give me a moment while we get the next caller. Our next caller is parent Harjinder Dillon. Hi there, you're on with the board. Make sure to turn down your listening device so that we can hear you loud and clear and there's no feedback. You have a minute thirty and your time starts now.
Hello, hello, can you hear?
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm speaking about the parent of the, the, my, 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 and I, uh, people, my children, they're not, they're not, you. I wanted to command of, uh, the, uh, the, and, uh, we, we, uh, I wanted to focus by the, the, before, uh, together, it really does, it's, yes. In eighty-nine years, this, this, this map, it's more compact and making some of the underpass to be deep, which I think is great, that, that many, uh, have to go to, 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 together.
Excuse, excuse me, sir, could you hold on for a second? Sir, Gilbert, we're having trouble hearing him up here. Do you want him to call back in or?
Hello?
Sir, are you on a cellphone?
Hello?
Sir, are you on a cellphone?
Yes, yes, I am.
Can you move around? We're not being able to hear you. You might have bad reception where you're at?
Okay, I, I call back, I call back.
All right then, thank you. Can you put him back on the list when he calls back in?
Absolutely.
Okay, do you have any other calls holding?
Yes, we have community member Ariana Mar Muzio. I apologize if I get that name wrong. She's about to be patched in.
All right.
Thank you.
Hi there, you're on with the board now. Please make sure to turn down whatever device you're using to listen to the meeting so you don't get any feedback and we can hear you. You have a minute and thirty to make your comments and your time starts now.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ariana Mar Leho. I'm a community member and I'm calling tonight in support of the Invest in Kids map for Map One Oh Eight Point One. I like this map because it preserves neighborhoods the best of all the draft maps and it uses community and interest notes from residents to build common sense districts, like groups of people together through similarities like where kids go to school, the age of neighborhoods, and income levels. It's also compact and well-balanced with a low population deviation. I also wanna say that, you know, just by looking at the current districts, it's clear that they're just strange and don't really make sense. But the Invest in Kids map really remedies a lot of the issues that are presented in the current districts. And apart from the Invest in Kids map, I would also be comfortable with Map One Ten Point One and Draft Map C, um, as alternate to the Invest in Kids map. Uh, thanks so much for your time and your fondness. Have a good night.
Thank you. Do you have another caller holding?
Yes, next up, we have Monica Chavez, parent and community member.
President Solis, if I may, while we wait for the next caller, can I just, um, state the phone number? There seems to be conversation on our YouTube channel, folks trying to provide comments, and they can't find the, the phone number. So if there's any community member wishing to speak during this public hearing, the number to call is five five nine two seven six three one five zero. Again, the number to call is five five nine two seven six three one five zero. Thank you.
Thank you. And Gilbert, can you ensure that the number is being flashed across the screen?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So Monica, you are on now. Please make tur, make sure to turn down your listening device so that we can hear you loud and clear and that you don't have any feedback. You have a minute thirty to make your comments and your time starts now.
Thank you. Good evening, board, press, please, Superintendent Davis, and all members of the Central Unified School Board. This is the first time I've ever participated at a school board meeting, so I'm sorry if my voice is a little shaky. My name is Monica Chavez, and I am a proud parent and of a student at Roosevelt. Uh, I just wanted to appreciate all the hard work done by the Central Together group, specifically Map One Four. I think they got so many different community members to participate, and we like it because it actually pays attention to the heart of Central Unified and it pays attention to the older neighborhoods as well. So we really hope that you vote for Map One Oh Four, Central Together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next call?
Our next caller is parent Tina Wallace. Hi Tina, you're on with the board. Make sure to turn down your listening device so we can hear you loud and clear and so you don't get any feedback. You have a minute thirty to make your comments and your time starts now.
Good evening, Central Unified. My name is Tina Wallace. I am a proud mama of one at Garza and one at GP. I am a Central graduate and take immense pride in our district. This redistricting process gives us community members a chance to raise our voice, and I wanted to speak up for Map One Oh Four. I like how it keeps certain newer developments connected as well as the more established communities. It gives us all a equitable voice, and this is extremely important in a district as diverse as ours in Central. I strongly urge the board to support Map One Oh Four, Central Together. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next call?
Next up, we have parent Lamar Washington. Hello, you're on with the board. Please make sure to turn down your listening device so we can hear you and you don't get any feedback. You have a minute thirty to make your comments and your time starts now.
All right, uh, hey, good evening, board. My name is Lamar Washington. I've lived in the district for about eight years and I have two children at the Chili Elementary. I wanted to share my support for Map One Oh Four tonight, the Central Together map. This map is a big improvement on the current district lines. We had lots of community input from families across the district. We especially like how it keeps some of our neighborhoods and communities together that straddled the ninety-nine in the south side of the district. straddles the ninety-nine and the south side of the district. I strongly urge the board to vote on Map 104, Central Together. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, sir. Next call?
Our next caller is parent Elizabeth Assatarian. Hello, you're on with the board. Please make sure to turn down your listening device, so we can hear you loud and clear, and so that way you don't get any feedback. You have a minute thirty to make your comments, and your time starts now.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, board members. My name is Elizabeth Assatryon, and I am a parent, actually, of a harvest hawk. And I wanted to also commend Jackie and Harjinder, who had spoken a little bit earlier in their team. I know they got lots of opinions from so many district residents, and I'm just calling to show my support for Map 104, Central Together. You know, living near harvest, we often feel like our area is super-divided, and our current trustee map, it couldn't speak to our interests together. And, you know, we know that no map will be perfect, but at least Map 104, Central Together, is a huge improvement and helps us to make sure we can choose a candidate that will help pay attention to our needs, and that of a district as a whole, a Central United truly. So, I strongly urge the Central Unified School Board to select Map 104, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other calls holding?
Yes, next, we have parent Jaclyn Garcia. Hi there, you're on with the board. Please make sure to turn down your listening device, so we can hear you loud and clear, and that way you won't get any feedback. You have a minute thirty to make your comments, and your time starts now.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Jackie Garcia. I am one of the authors of Map 104, Central Together, and I wanted to share with the board some of the processes for this map. We are parents in a South East, but we also talked to more than eighty neighbors to get their opinions from across the district. This map really pays attention to the wishes of older neighborhoods, rural neighborhoods, newer neighborhoods, and was really a multicultural and diverse community conversation. While I wish we got to talk even more people, we are proud that this is one of the largest conversations we've had, and wanted to commend Central Unified for allowing this process. Thank you again, and please support Map 104, Central Together. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next call?
Stand by, board, as I get the information. All right, our next caller is Michael Kurnasoff, community member. Hello, you're on with the board. Please make sure to turn down whatever device you're using to listen to the board meeting, that way we'll be able to hear you, and you won't get any feedback. You have a minute thirty to make your comment, and your time starts now.
Good evening, this is Michael Kurnasoff again. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm speaking in support of the Invest in Kids map, the 108.1, because it breathes new life into the districts that currently don't represent who is currently living in Central Unified. This map provides greater transparency and ensures our communities have a more integral part in the process. This map reflects community responsiveness regarding the issues that are important to them, and it aims to keep the communities and neighborhoods intact with the least amount of variation possible. Thanks for letting me speak again, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, sir.
So, next up, we have Harjinder, who had called earlier. Hello, you're on with the board. Please make sure to turn down your listening device, so we can hear you, and so you don't get any feedback. You have a minute thirty, and your time starts now.
Hello, this is Harjinder Dillon. My name is Dillon. I agree with my, I want to commend, I learned a lot about, I wanted to voice my support at Central Together, because the area I live.
Excuse me, sir, we're still having trouble hearing you. Do you have a landline that you can call on?
No, I, I'll email you my, my, I'll email you my comment.
All right, we'll be looking forward for your email. Thank you. Do you have any other calls holding?
Yes, next up, we have community member Glenda Jackson. Hello, you're on with the board now. Please make sure to turn down your listening device, so we can hear you loud and clear, and that way you don't get any feedback. You have a minute thirty to make your comment, and your time starts now.
Good evening, and thank you, trustees. My name is Glenda Jackson. I'm a parent and community member, and I'm here to support the Invest in Kids map, because I believe in accountability for our actions, and I believe in the future of our kids, and I believe this map to be fair. Our communities continue to grow, and by the next census, we'll have increased in size even more, we'll be, we'll be more diverse, and this map will be a reflection of future growth. So, this map puts prioritizing neighborhoods at the forefront, and it's an attempt to right some wrongs that previous generations have been impacted by. This is why I want to adopt this map, and as a parent who cares about the future of our neighborhood, I call upon you, the board, to do the right and just thing. I appreciate you for hearing me out, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other phone calls?
Yes, we have another community member, Antonio Haregi. Hello, you're on with the board now. Please make sure to turn down your listening device, so we can hear you loud and clear, and that way you don't get any feedback. You have a minute thirty to make your comments, and your time starts now.
Good evening, thank you for having me. My name is Antonio, how again, I'm a community member. The reason for my call is to support the Invest in Kids map. This map, like many of the other maps, but this one in particular, holds fairness, representation, and government to a higher standard. It's very important that this map happens, because it prioritizes our, keeping our neighborhoods together and intact, and it works to mend a lot of the previous generations of, you know, gerrymandering, partisan, and most importantly, or just as important, over the course of the next ten years, the next census, these communities will grow stronger in size and diversity and representation, and this map is the reflection of just that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next call?
Stand by while I get that information. Next, we have parent Lovepreet Kar.
That was, I think, more like.
Hello, you're on with the board. Please make sure to turn down your listening device, so we can hear you loud and clear, and that way you don't get any feedback. You have a minute and thirty to make your comments, and your time starts now.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Good evening, all. My name is Lovepreet Kar, and my son goes to Polk Elementary. We wanted to support Map 104, Central Together. Jackie got many different opinions, and we appreciate her asking so many people, and, you know, and so many people coming out to support the Map 104, so we hope that you choose Map 104, Central Together. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next caller?
Stand by while I get that information. We have no other comments by phone at this time.
Okay, thank you. Keep the phone lines open for right now. Can we please call the public people that want to speak in the auditorium?
First person is Mark Felton.
Checking the mic. Am I audible? Okay. Good evening, trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Mark Quintos Felton, and I am here to support the Invest in Kids map, also known as Map 108.1. I stand here as a product of the Central Unified School District. I attended Teague Elementary all throughout K through sixth grade, El Capitan Middle School for Junior High School, and even Central High as a freshman. I personally worked on this map and its design, amongst others. This map transforms how local communities are represented. I know personally how important this is. This map meets an ideal low-population deviation, two-point-six-seven percent, well below the ten percent threshold permitted by the courts. It ensures that the original core of the Highway City neighborhood as a whole is represented together, keeping it intact, unlike Map 104. This is the map that cuts least, least cuts through the neighborhoods. With a community of interest input, we would like to carefully place neighborhoods into districts with many things in common. As a backup plan, we support Map 110.1 and C. The Invest in Kids map values the dignity of community residents regardless of their race, class, or social standing. I can tell you, we made a conscious effort to include voices from community members directly impacted, and puts their vision not only at the forefront, but for the next ten years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Brooks?
Next, I have Mr. Navarro Cruz. I can't understand the first name, sorry.
Good evening, trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Pedro Navarro Cruz, and I'm here also to support the Invest in Kids map, also known as Map 108.1. This map was created with input from residents that are important stakeholders in Central Unified, such as teachers, alumni, community center employees, coaches, and parents. We collected community of interest testimony, which then we used to create districts or trustee areas. We carefully placed neighborhoods together based on commonalities, such as where kids go to school, the age of neighborhoods, income levels, and compact geography that makes sense. We believe that our map makes the most sense, and given each region of the district and identity, which the current map does not accomplish. We also observed that our map is one of the least, it's the one that least cuts through the neighborhoods, though we understand why it was a difficult task to accomplish, when most of the population is barely, is being severely along Highway Ninety-Nine, and there's very minimal population on the east part of the district. Though I do not live in this district, I personally do frequent inside the district, and something that stands out when I visit my Mong family, members that, through marriage, that live in the district, is the richness and diversity within the district. Their neighbors to the right, they're white, and every time I visit, I always see folks riding their bike, or walking through, that are Mong, that are Punjabi, Latino, Black, and so it's just very rich in the diversity. That is basically how the district looks like wherever you go. And so it makes sense to adopt the Invest in Kids map, since it best gives the opportunity for these very diverse families to come together and find common ground in order to move the district forward, and meet the needs of all the youth in the district. You need a cohesive map. Invest in Kids was made with the intent to encompass that. We also want to mention that both map C and 110.1 are strong maps. Thank you for your consideration. Oh, and please keep Highway City together.
Thank you. Ms. Brooks?
That'd be all.
That's it? Do we have any other callers holding online?
No other comments by phone.
All right, with that, I'll end the public comment section and open up questions to the board. Anyone have any comments? Mr.?
We have Joshua Sellers here, who would like to speak on redistricting. Does the board permit him to talk?
Can you please hand him a form and make sure he fills out the form before he leaves? Joshua, go ahead.
Good evening, board trustees and superintendents. My name is Joshua Sellers. I am a parent and a community member. I have submitted map number 105.1 for your consideration. This proposed map establishes clear and easily identifiable boundaries for all seven trustee districts or areas, while maintaining a maximum deviation less than three and a half percent. As you can see, each encompassing boundary is balanced in population, and reflects the demographics of a diverse community. One thing, I have the unique opportunity of not only being a resident in the district, I've also had the opportunity and privilege to serve several years of my career, serving here in this region of Fresno. I've got to see, over the years, the growth and the progress that this area has made. As you know, over the last two decades, this part of the city has seen tremendous growth, and that trend is only continuing. It's not going to change anytime soon. So, one of the biggest challenges that I had while I was trying to get information from others and compile this map, playing with the current trustee boundaries is, was very difficult, making small adjustments, accounting for changes in populations, kind of rob Peter, pay Paul over here, and it's very difficult. I think it's important that we establish clear boundaries that are easily identifiable. This map does that, as well as allows for the future changes with the 2030 census and moving forward, having boundaries that are easily identified, and as well as the school locations, trying to divide them up amongst all members equally. This map does that. So, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Can you please fill the form out and hand it to Ms. Lopez?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments in the auditorium? Any phone calls holding?
No comments by phone.
Okay, with that, I'll end the public comment section and open it up to the board for questions. Any questions from the board? Mr. Cervantes? No. Mr. Paul?
Yeah, is there any way that we can find out? I mean, we know the names of these organizations that put these maps together. Is there any information about them that you have?
In terms of how the groups are put together? Is that what you're asking?
I guess what I'm looking for is some sort of an idea of what kind of, was there any accounting for, were those groups represented by, by members of the community? Number one, was there any idea of the numbers involved in those associations, those types of things? Do you have anything, any information like that?
All the, all the maps, from what I understand, are made by community members, and they came up and spoke. I also had the great opportunity to meet with a number of them over the, through email, and actually online. I met.
Can you speak into the microphone a little better?
I just said, all the maps, from what I understand, are made by local community members, here from Fresno, or from Central Unified. I don't know all the individuals, but I did have the pleasure of speaking with a number of them over the phone, and via email, and the like, so, you know, it takes local knowledge to create these maps in the way they are, and I think folks spoke to that. Again, I had a great opportunity to meet, you know, Mr. Sellers over here, and Pedro over there. Like, like many of you, it's the first time I've seen them in person, but our overall assessment is that the maps are representative of your community here. They're all very well-designed, within comparable deviations, and so we, as a company, we don't have a preference either way for any map, as far as I'm concerned. All the maps are more than adequate to represent the current and future needs of the Central Unified School District.
So, your assessment would be that, excuse me, that each one of these alternative maps outside of what you proposed, would have been put together by members of the community, of the central community?
You can't make these maps without local knowledge. And I think everybody here spoke very eloquently about the local communities, and I think we'd also give credit to my colleague back here, Alex, who has designed the tool that allowed communities to do this, and I'm very glad to hear, again, Mr. Sellers mention- And I'm very glad to hear, again, Mr. Sellers mentioning the rob Peter to pay Paul, because that's exactly the scenario that we had in all of the maps. You move a little thing here and all of a sudden it's off by 500 people. And it's not just the population. It's also the underlying race, ethnic, and other statistics. But again, if you look at all the maps, they all have a, sort of a similar look. That's the one thing I tell folks when I've done this is, all the maps usually have a, you know, like a Michelangelo's in that rock and we just need to pull them out. We have six or seven Michelangelos here and they're all wonderful maps, in our opinion. But thanks to my colleague Alex and the technological tools, we allowed people the opportunity to succeed and create good maps and find out for themselves when something was off. But again, as far as I could tell, you have some great people here in Fresno that know their communities.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chan?
I think I'm interested in sort of the discussion the board's going to have. I actually just even want to commend Steve's team and, sorry, Assistant Superintendent McLean's team and the Geonova team because when there were glitches, I would get emails, but you all resolved those with the individuals and community members, that message. So I just actually appreciate just how quick you were to respond and to Alex's point. That makes me happy that, at least the different areas you've worked with, that Central Unified has had some of the most robust public engagement. That was our point and glad to see that we achieved that.
Thank you. Ms. Creo?
Similar question to trustee Paul. When the community members submitted their maps, did they provide any information as to the communities of interest that they were trying to keep together? I know I heard from a lot of the members of the public, which I do agree that it sounds like they were all community members or had someone involved who is living in our district and who we represent. But I'm wondering, like, for example, we heard numerous comments for public 104.1 Central Together. I want to ensure that we're drawing clean lines while we retain those majority populations of our ethnic and race groups. I know that there was discussion about the diversity of our district. Yes, we're very diverse, but I do want to make sure that, to the extent that we can, that we're not diluting that population out of compliance. But I would be curious, with some of these areas, like for example, that public 104.1, trustee area four, if there's a specific community that is trying to be kept together? But it sounds like we don't get any other details other than just the maps they submit, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
When we solicit the public to submit input through our mapping tools or through direct contact with us, the only requirements on our end, again, we don't have any preference toward any group or any specific map. We only require that all districts or all trustee areas that are created be somewhat geographically compact, to the extent practicable, and that the population variances stay within the 10 percent.
Are you finished?
My only other question would be whether there is some consensus as to the maps that we don't agree or if we're going to focus on the maps that we heard from the public and the ones suggested by our demographer or what the next process, because we have a lot of maps.
What I was going to do is let the board finish taking, asking their questions. At that point, it's my understanding that the time element that we need is that we could table this item for a decision after we close a public hearing until the meeting of the 22nd. That would enable other board, well, this board members to look at all the maps and also if they wish to follow it with phone calls from maybe some of the creators of the maps. But that would be at the discretion of the board. Go ahead.
Mr. McLean, if there was more time given, could we also follow up to the question that was raised by two of our trustees about the goals of each of those submitters?
Yes, I believe we could do that. We did hear verbally some comments, but if we wanted to get more background from each group as to what they were, what they were looking to accomplish, we could certainly do that.
So definitely the creators of 104 and 108.1, please contact the office and make sure we have your contact numbers. It sounds like some of the board members want to have further information about you.
Well, I mean, if the board is ready, I think we should try and make a decision today. I know I have some questions, but I was just curious whether that they can be answered tonight or in fact would require more information.
At this point, I'm going to let the board finish asking their questions and then put it to a consensus of the board. Are there any more questions? Mr. Chan?
I think this question is aimed at Assistant Superintendent McLean. If, for instance, the adoption of the map takes an existing trustee member out of their district, as per our board policies, would we have to have a special election? Or would that wait until the November election? How would that work? Should an existing trustee member be taken out?
Yeah, I can answer that, but these guys are, I think, a little more eloquent on that topic with their experience.
In general, if trustee areas or in other jurisdictions and districts are drawn that take an incumbent out of their area, that incumbent would serve out the remainder of their term. So in this case, if that incumbent's term was up in November 2022, they would serve through the end of that term. And then they would have the choice to run again in the district that they reside in after the new map is adopted. But they would not be able to run again in, you know, in the district where they have been displaced from. But they would be able to serve out the remainder of their current term.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Garcia?
Can you hear me? Also, the numbering of, this is a parallel to the question that we just talked about. The numbering of the districts is really at the discretion of the board here. So we've numbered them, you know, 1 through 9, but you can reorder them however you see fit once you adopt the map that you would prefer. So again, I tried to use the existing geography as the guide and in some cases, got pretty close and a few, I think, we were a little off. But you can renumber the maps however you want once the final map is adopted. I just wanted to note that.
Thank you, sir. Not hearing any other questions, I'm going to close the public hearing. All right, I closed the public hearing. Now I would like to get a consensus of the board. Do you, you have submitted some new maps. Do you want some more time to do research? And we can agendize the item for the meeting of the 22nd or you want to take action today? Yes, Mr.?
Yeah, I'm in favor of tabling this until the next one. I think we should narrow down the maps to, you know, 2, 3, 4 even. I do have a couple of questions and I just want to make sure that I get it right.
Okay. Any other comments?
I mean, I would ask that we at least have a discussion about these maps today, even if it gets tabled. And depending on the discussion, if there is consensus on one of the maps and there's an opportunity to take action, I would highly encourage us to do so.
Mr. Chan?
Can we begin? Do we all feel comfortable at least eliminating to begin with half the maps? And then continuing the conversation, seeing if it makes sense to table or if we can take an action? But at least those that were, we're going to have to decrease the number anyways. And so maybe that's best for us to start tonight, at least those that we're least interested in.
Mr. Maylie? You have any concerns? No? So is there consensus in the group that we, A, have a, start a conversation right now about the maps and delete some of them and leave some? If you decide you're going to table, then table the non-deleted ones to the next board meeting? Yes? All right. Ms. Creo, since you're the one that brought it up at the discussion, feel free to start.
I mean, there are some maps that I like and agree with their division. Map A, potentially map B. They all provide, I like that they do keep our majority of our populations based on race and ethnicity together. Obviously, given the amount of comments that we've received, I'd want us to have conversation about 104.1, 108.1. I think we heard from, for 105.1. And so those were some of the maps that I was considering.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Savantes?
I have a question, board chair. Thank you. I wasn't making notations, but how many people called in for 108 and how many people called in for 104? Was there any notation there?
Mr. Chan, might be able to help you out.
So as best as I could hear, 104 had eight, sorry, yes, 104 had eight people call in, 108 had six people call in, and 105 had one person call in.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Paul?
Yes, I'd like to also include map C for consideration.
You said map A as an-
C, C as in cat.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? I'd like to see A, B, C, and 104.1 to stay in the mix. Mr. Chan?
I'd also just like to make sure that we give, at least for a special consideration, to 104, 108, 105. I think we invited the public to, you know, make a map and, you know, many community members took the time and actually did. So I want to, I really want to kind of commend them for participating, for Geonova, for creating the system for them to participate and to highly encourage us to really look at 104, 108, and 105.
Thank you. So right now, Mr. Savantes?
I'd like to see A, B, 104, and 108.
All right. Thank you. Right now, I believe the consensus of the group, well, what the group has said is they want to keep map A, map B, map C, map 104.1, 108.1, and 105 in the mix. Now, at this point, is there any other maps that the board wants to keep in the running? Hearing none. Those are the maps that are in the running at this point. Now we need a consensus. Do we want to take a vote tonight? Or do we want time and put this on the agenda for the 22nd and make a decision? What is the pleasure of the board?
I would, Mr. Solis?
Yes.
I would vote on the side of tabling it. That's my personal opinion.
Okay, is that a motion, Mr. Paul?
I can turn that into a motion, sure.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Paul to table A, B, C, 104.1, 108.1, and 105 till the next meeting on the 22nd. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Brooks. Discussion on the item?
So are we not going to have any further discussion about the maps?
I asked if there was any, did you have some more questions you wanted to ask?
Well, I don't have questions. I want to hear, I mean, if board members, why is it that they want the map? Or what are we looking for? Otherwise, we're going to be back at the same place in two weeks. I mean, if anyone has anything else to say, if we don't and these are the maps and we're just going to vote and we'll just, whoever makes the motion in a second and gets the majority votes, it is what it is.
All right. So why don't we hold the motion we have in the floor? I'll try to reword this. Does anyone have any more comments they wish to make at this time on the maps they wanted held over? Seeing none, Ms. Creo? I'm going to call the motion for a vote. All right. All those in favor for tabling the above-mentioned maps to the next meeting indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
We have two opposed. The motion carries, the matter will be tabled until the 22nd. Thank you. Ms. Lopez, can you call the next item?
The next item is L2, Accept Gifts to the District. Mr. McLean.
I'm sorry.
Next item, Mr. McLean.
I was following up there. Apologize. For the gifts?
Yeah.
Thank you. Tonight, we have several gifts that were donated to the district. The first one, the Foundation for Central Schools donated $500 to Central High School ASB and $450 to Justin Garza High School ASB for the 2021 Granville Home of Hope ticket purchase promotion. We also have, from the Child Nutrition Department, donations from Producers Dairy. We received four bicycles valued at $800 to be raffled off to students and four helmets for those students that win the raffle. $200 from Foundation for Central Schools for the students who win those bikes. And lastly, for River Bluff Elementary School, there's a donation of $200 from Slim's Flooring, which is Larry Sanchez and Yvonne Tellus owners for a sponsorship of the National Cheer Competition entrance fees. I want to thank all of these donors for their donations and recommending at this time that the board accept these gifts to the district.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
You moved to accept the gifts?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Creo, I believe, is second by Mr. Savantes. Oh, Mr. Paul. All right. Discussion on the motion? Hearing none? Calling the item for a vote? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay? Any abstentions? No abstentions? The ayes have it, the motion carries. Ms. Lopez, can you call the next item?
Next item is L3, Adopt Revised Board Policies. Mr. Collegian?
Thank you, President Solis. Board of Trustees, this item returns from our previous board meeting. The attached policies have been revised in accordance with GAMET and CSBA to reflect compliance with state and federal laws. Board policies listed for your review for action tonight. Our board policy for 112.8 series, 24312.8 series, employment of relatives. The summary document is attached for your review. Also, please note that this board policy was updated based on school board feedback from our previous board meeting. from our previous board meeting to reflect the changes in the attachment, specifically reading that the board is to receive notice of such appointment at the end of the second to last paragraph on Board Policy 4112.8. And the last board policy listed here are the probationary permanent status of classified employees for item Board Policy 4216. Administration is recommending approval of these board policies. Happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Ms. Creo, a second by Mr. Chan. Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, calling the item for a vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed indicate by saying nay.
Nay.
Nay. All right, we have one nay, the rest are all approving it, the motion carries. Ms. Lopez, can you call the next item?
Next item is L4, Approved Purchase for Central High School Ag Department, Mr. Garrett.
Good evening, President Solis, Members of the Board, and Acting Superintendent Davis. I bring this item to you for action this evening. The purchase of 10 MIG runner welders will modernize the equipment that students use for training and expose them to modern technology and industry standards in the realm of welding at Central High School. It also allows students to gain and strengthen skills such as shield metal arc welding, metal inert gas welding, fabrication, and design process within the agriculture industry as well as safe equipment operation and maintenance. This equipment will be used for ag mechanics I, II, ag welding and fabrication, and ROP welding. Per their requirements, the request has been approved by Fresno County Superintendent of Schools and the California Department of Education and will require approximately three months for processing and receipt of items. As a result of this timeline, staff is bringing this straight to action and are recommending approval. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the board? Mr. Maylie?
Mr. Garrett, what are they doing with the stuff they're replacing, the old equipment?
From my understanding, the stuff are the items that they still are utilizing still work. I'm not sure of the transition plan once those new items come in, but I can find out that implementation process and we can get that information to you.
Thank you. Ms. Creo?
The funding source for these items, it's a grant, correct?
Correct, this will be funded out of C-TIG.
Thank you.
Mr. Sivantes?
Same question.
Any other questions or statements? Not hearing any, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion by Ms. Creo, a second by Mr. Chan. Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, calling the item for a vote. All those, all those, just went blank in my mind. All those in favor of the item indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nays? The ayes have it. Ms. Lopez, can you call the next item?
Next item on the agenda is Information Item Number One, Receive Information Regarding Comprehensive School Safety Plans, Mr. Garrett.
Good evening again. I'm bringing for information tonight the school site comprehensive safety plans and emergency procedure documents for your annual review. These documents are maintained electronically and updated on a yearly basis, and completion of these updates must be reported to the California Department of Education during the month of March. In addition to the maintenance and annual update of these documents, each plan includes response procedures to a variety of situations, including those involving social media, and have added information on multi-tiered systems of support or MTSS resources utilized by sites in response to student need, a link to our Injury Illness and Prevention Program, the IILP, and our current COVID-19 guidance and procedures. Our sites regularly conduct drills and training to ensure preparedness and competency in the event of an emergency. All of our sites follow a monitored drill schedule, performing monthly fire drills, lockdown drills, and drop cover and hole drills. In addition, once a year, every site is required to undergo active shooter training provided by the Fresno County Sheriff's Department. Once the yearly update is complete, the plans are signed by the principal and school site council chairperson prior to coming to the board for review and approval. Please do note that Central Online Homeschool does not require a school site council and therefore that signature is omitted. And please also note that due to a formatting error on the signature page, information was omitted from Central East High, Central High School, and Steinbeck Elementary. I do, though, have printed copies of their plans that have the required signatures and will update those files for the next board meeting. I would like to thank our site administration who are in attendance this evening for all of their hard work in completing and communicating the safety plans with their respective staff members. Administration is recommending that this item be placed on the February 22nd board agenda for action, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the board? Mr. Paul?
These appear to be really comprehensive plans. Looks like a lot of work, so I appreciate the hard work. Are they, I know what you said about the active site shooter, the active shooter training. How closely are these plans followed?
Fortunately, we haven't had to engage in a response to situations like that. In regards to our fire drills, our lockdown drills, the drills that we do to prepare for an event, we do follow what is outlined in the procedures in terms of, you know, exiting the campus or lining up in the designated locations, things of that nature.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chan.
I just wanted to bring up to Assistant, sorry, Interim Superintendent Davis, one program that I've heard really excellent things about was, just for note, the Secure Community Networks in terms of a plan for active shooters. This was a Jewish organization when the recent attacks happened at the synagogue in Texas. This particular plan, they do work with school districts, they felt really above and beyond, and many of those that survived, I mean, all the folks that survived actually really commended this particular program. I know it's available for schools, so maybe something we want to look into in addition.
Thank you, will do.
Thank you. Any other questions or statements? Hearing none, I will be placing this on consent unless I hear any objections. It will be placed on consent.
Thank you.
Ms. Lopez, can you call the next item?
Next item is M2, Receive Information Regarding Field Trips, Dr. Boatwright.
Good evening, Acting Superintendent Davis, President Solis, and members of the board. Requests for overnight field trips and day trips more than 150 miles must obtain board approval. The following field trip requests are attached. Administration is recommending this item be placed on the February 22nd board agenda for action, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, I'll place it on consent unless there's objections. Consent it is. Ms. Lopez, can you call the next item?
Next item is M3, Receive Information for Employee Out-of-State Travel, Mr. Garrett.
Good evening again. Tonight, I'm bringing for information an out-of-state travel request for the Activity Director at Central High School to attend the California Association Directors of Activity State Conference. This conference is attended by other activity directors from Central Unified and does take place in Reno, Nevada, March 2nd through March 5th, 2022. Again, the CADA Conference, State Conference, is the largest event in the nation for activity directors, and it does provide our activity directors with new tools and skills to do their work and the opportunity to collaborate with other activity directors from across the United States. Again, all state and local COVID-19 guidelines will be enforced and masks are required at all indoor sessions. Administration is recommending this item be placed on the February 22nd agenda for action, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from board members? Hearing none, I'll place it at consent unless there's any objections. Consent it is.
Thank you.
Calling item N, Advanced Planning, Ms. Davis?
The calendar is attached, and I would just like to note there are a few special topics on the next meeting related to late start that's not typically on the calendar, but I do want to make our public and you aware, we'll be bringing in information item on late start as well as an LCAP supplement report that is a new addition from the state that we report to you, so we will include that at the next meeting, which will include some academic information as well as some planning for kind of a mid-year check-in. Other than that, all the items you'll see are for advanced planning attached.
Thank you. Item O, any comments from the board? Hearing none. Our next scheduled meeting will be February the 25th?
It should be the 22nd.
Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Creo and a second by Mr. Chan. Discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nays? The ayes have it. Thank you very much for attending the meeting.